The biggest concern based on the survey is terrorists. We're very concerned about organized crime, drug cartels, and human trafficking. We're concerned about the violence on the border. We're concerned about competing with unauthorized workforce. We're concerned about improper assimilation. We're concerned about the financial drain. We're concerned about the loss of American culture. The one thing that I gave them an option to choose was an option of a concern that says increasing non-white population. I can tell you that that is not a concern of the Tea Parties in Central Texas, Bell County, or Williamson County. We want the issues related to illegal immigration addressed with separate legislation. How we would like legislation prioritized. Number one, the number one priority was border security. The number under the high priority there was fighting organized crime, drug cartels, human trafficking, interior enforcement, fighting terrorism, verifying eligibility for employment. Medium priority was dealing with adults who were brought here illegally when they were children, improving assimilation. A low priority was increasing VC applications. Not a priority by the Tea Parties was granting citizenship. Here's a yes or no question. Overwhelmingly, the Tea Parties believe talking about granting citizenship encourages more unlawful entry, thus making the problem of illegal immigration worse. Okay, so that's just our statement from the local Tea Parties. We are going to allow Congressman Carter to do a presentation, and then we're gonna have questions, comments, and concerns coming from the crowds. We're asking that you limit your questions and comments to...
Thank you, John. And first and foremost, thank all of you, every single one of you, who came out here to listen, to watch this film, and to talk about it. This is the second time I've watched this film. My wife and I watched it night before last. We watched it again... Oh, sorry. I'll probably pace more than I'll set. We watched it again tonight. It is a film that points out a lot of the things that we already know because we are Texans. You know, I tell people in Washington that we have a saying in Texas that in a plate of ham and eggs, the hen is involved, but the pig is committed. Well, that's very simple. Texans have lived with this issue all of their adult lives and all of their children's lives as a child. And so this is our issue. And I honestly and truly believe, and that's why Sam Johnson and I started a process long ago, to try to get something done, to try to come up with a common sense solution for immigration reform. We decided we were gonna do it as two Texans, and we were gonna try to get together the hardest group of people we could put it together and see if we could come up with a solution. Now, the film told us the problems. The film did not give us the solutions. We've got... You've all got your ideas on the solutions, and I'm willing to let you share those with me. I want to share with you some of the solutions we've come up with and how we did it. Now, let's talk about solving a problem in Washington DC first, okay? So everybody knows this because you all took civics at some point in time in your life to graduate from high school, so you know a little bit about how our government works. And our challenge, as we started out looking at this problem, was how can we get something that will be passed in such a manner that it will pass the House, which is controlled by the Republican Party, and pass the Senate, which is controlled by the Democratic Party, and get signed by the President, who is the head of the Democratic Party? And that's a real challenge. Many, many people say to us all the time, "Why don't you do this in the House? You can do it." Sure we can. And if that and fifty cents or maybe a dollar will get you a cup of coffee. But the facts are, if the Senate doesn't pass it and the President doesn't sign it, it doesn't become law. And if it's not law, it's not worth the time to do the job. I'm gonna tell you something else, it is my personal feelings about the whole process. And I've been at it now for over four years. Before I became chairman of a committee that is the number one subject of that committee is immigration, before that time I started on this. I'm concerned about the fact that we have an administration that has a history right now of not enforcing the laws that are on the books. And so I start off on this, in this process, being very clear to you that I have worked my butt off on this thing with a bunch of really fine people. But I'm not gonna let... I'm not gonna continue to do it if I keep seeing a President and an Attorney General who refuse to enforce the law. Because it's worse, it's a waste of our time. So this is a... That's a subject for another time. And we ask, "Don't shout out, or we'll never get anything done," okay? So, starting there, let me just show you what we came up with. And you're not gonna like every bit of it. I'm gonna tell you that. I should've taken it out, my coat, before I took my coat off. This issue is a human issue. It involves human beings. This issue is an economic issue. It involves, quite honestly, the economy of the United States. This issue is a law enforcement issue. It involves laws that have been violated. Some of those laws are major, some of those are minor. So, and it involves a lot of other things. But those are three important things that it involves. Now, I wouldn't ask you... The fellow on the show here made the comment, "You won't see any Congressman out here on the border." Well, day before yesterday, I was on the border. Day before yesterday, I rode that same boat down that same river that he rode down, okay? Day before yesterday, I flew a helicopter from Brownsville to McAllen, looking at all the crossing points. And this weekend, my wife and I, and she's not happy because she didn't get to ride in the helicopter. We went to the border with my staff, and we went from Brownsville to McAllen, and we went to crossings. We looked at what goes on at crossing points. We looked at what goes on where people cross the river. We talked about the cartels. We talked about the money, how much money it's generating for the cartels. They're not just drug smugglers, folks, they're people smugglers. And in fact, the average market for ordinary folks to cross the river right now is $2,000 to $5,000 a head. And by the way, if you don't want to use a cartel to cross and you cross on your own, you have a very good chance your family will be killed by the cartels. So they have a pretty good market. If it's $2,000, $2,000 a head, and just assume for the sake of an example, that there are 11 million people in this country, and just to assume for an example, they all use a cartel to cross. They didn't, but just assume that for a minute. That's $22 billion in revenue. You're dealing with big business crime, not just in drugs, in people. So keep those things in mind as we talk about how we have to solve this problem. The day we started, over four years ago, we decided, "Let's pick the toughest room we can deal with." We got ten conservative Republicans and ten liberal Democrats, and put each other in a room and locked the door. Amazingly, there were no deaths that day. And we sat down and said, "What can we... How do we do this?" The first thing we decided was, "We've got to do this quietly." Two reasons. First, we don't want anybody on the outside pulling at anybody until we get well along in this process. We don't want interest groups pulling at us. We don't want to answer to the press every time we walk out of the door. So we want to do this, man and woman, the man and woman in the room, to try to work out the difference. That was a very, very important, and honest, an honest assessment. We also knew that it wasn't a popular thing for me and Texas, me and Sam Johnson in Texas, to be working with ten liberal Democrats. And by the way, it wasn't a popular thing for Luis Cruz Diaz to be working with two folks from Texas. So we knew that we were protecting our own self by doing this quietly and privately. We yelled, we fought, and we met every week for four years, and nobody knew we were meeting. That's divine intervention as far as I'm concerned. But seriously, until February of this year, we were a secret. We made the press in February, and we had 450 pages written prior to February. We've got fifteen written since February because of the publicity. But here's basically, in a simple form, what we call four pillars. I can't see it, but I'll... It's just to remind me what to say. First pillar, to hold this economy up and hold this country up, is we have to defend our borders. Now, I went down there, I went first to Laredo and, four years ago, I went down on the border at night, sat in a car with a Border Patrolman, and spent six hours in the dark chasing folks. So I've been right where this guy's been. Now, I wouldn't take my wife there, but I did it. This time, I spent four days on the border, seeing if it's gotten any better. It has a little bit, but not a whole lot. And I happen to know how much resources we put in this project because that's what my committee does. It does the money for defending our borders, among other things. We fund the Border Patrol, we fund CBP, we fund Secret Service, we fund a whole lot of law enforcement efforts, and we fund immigration policy. And so the funds that we provide in the appropriations process are directly related to the issues that's here. And I can tell you, we have spent tens of billions of dollars in the last ten years on the border, and it's better, but it's not secure. And we cannot go forward on anything else until we have a reasonable amount of security on the border that is doable. And I believe we can do it. We have to start by having situational awareness of the border. That means we have to know what's going on from Brownsville to San Diego. And that's a long way. There's an awful lot of wilderness in that country. These folks that will drive around in these buggies and chase these folks, they'll tell you that's wilderness. And they were, in a pretty decent part, get out between Del Rio and Big Ben and tell me what kind of wilderness is out there. Or go out into some parts of Arizona and tell me how much wilderness is there. But we can do this. We can know, at least have knowledge. How would we do it? The same way our troops secured perimeters in Iraq and Afghanistan. We put up drones, we put up towers, we put up barriers, we use fiber optics to tie our system together. There's a lot of things we have not yet tried that we have to try. And in the bill that we drafted, that I'm gonna talk to you about, that is a trigger. In other words, nothing else in the bill happens until we have determined that we have 95% situational awareness on the border and a 90% catch and turn back ratio. And quite honestly, right now, it's not possible, but I still believe it is possible, and so do you. So that's where we start. And securing the border is... So whatever comes after securing the border, it's a trigger, and until we certify that, and we're still working on how we will certify it, it certainly will not be Janet Napolitano For your information, the gentleman said, "We hadn't done anything about some stuff here." I always want to point out, two days before Napolitano released those criminals from her possession, I asked her straight out, face to face, I said, "Mr. Napolitano, I've heard a rumor you're about to release criminal aliens. Is there any truth to that?" She said, "No, there is not." I said, "I'm gonna tell you about the difference between other people in this country and somebody from Texas." I said, "You lie to me, and I'm gonna be your worst enemy. I want to ask you again, did you release those people?" "No, we are not gonna release them, and we're not gonna release them, and I have no knowledge of anybody being released." So, I said, "Thank you." The next day, she announced the release of those prisoners. And I cut 50% of her office budget for the year. And she is building this big fancy building across the river, across the river from the Capitol complex, and we shut down construction on her building. It won't be built on this year. Now, that's what our budget does. We'll wait and see what the Senate does. But I just want to tell you, we are... There are people that are doing something about some of this. Now, the second thing I want to tell you is, most of you know this, but some of you don't, I'm an old trial judge. I spent 20, almost 21 years making folks abide by the law. And I'm not bragging, but in the period of time I served as the district judge, Williamson County, which was my district, had the lowest crime rate in the United States consistently for ten straight years. You punish people, and they don't commit crimes, or they go someplace else to commit them. And so, I honestly and truly believe that the rule of law is the glue that holds this society together. And as he asked that young man, "Do you think your mother broke the law?", the young man didn't want to answer the question. He said, "Do you think you get to choose which laws you get to abide by and which laws you don't?" He said, "Yeah, I think some of them I don't agree with." I disagree with what that young man had to say. There's plenty of dope dealers that think you shouldn't be arrested and thrown in jail for dealing dope. There's plenty of pedophiles who think you ought to be able to molest little children, and it ought to be legal. In fact, it's free love. There's plenty of car thieves that think any car that's left the keys in it belongs to them. There's lots of people in our prisons right now who didn't agree with the law that they violated, but that doesn't mean they don't get to go to prison. Okay, so I start off with a very simple thing. The rule of law prevails in the United States, and it prevails because of this document right here. Because we are the only country in the world that bases our sovereignty on a little booklet full of laws right there. And that's our sovereign. Our sovereign's not some queen or some dictator. Our sovereign is a piece of paper. And we swear allegiance to that piece of paper. And we swear as office holders to preserve, protect, and defend that. So, taking the concept of the rule of law, but also, let me tell you, and John is on my Hispanic Council and others around here, some in this room are on my Hispanic Council, I've been meeting with Hispanics, not because this is a Hispanic issue. Let me make that real clear to my young friends over here. This is an immigration issue. And there were a thousand Irishmen on the hill two years ago, saved the Irish Buttons, and you ask them what that meant? They said, "We're all illegal aliens." And they wanted special laws for Irishmen. Okay, so this 40% of the people who are in our country today illegally did not come across one of our borders. They flew in here in an airplane with a valid visa, and they overstayed their visa. No one yet has crossed that border and attacked the United States and killed Americans in a major attack. But all of the people who crossed, who committed 9/11 were overstays on visas. So, the problem is more than the border. The problem is the interior. The problem is we have no exit policy in this country. We know who comes in, but we don't know when they leave, or if they leave. And yet, their visa says they have to leave within a certain period of time, but they don't leave. And there are literally millions of people who came here legally and then overstayed and broke the law, and they are now breaking it every day they stay. So this is a bigger, bigger question that we're dealing with. So the first thing I had to deal with was the folks that I knew, and that was the people that I go to church with. They're the people that I... Our family eats out together. We go to social events. My boys played ball with their boys. My girls played ball with their girls. And I'm talking about the Hispanic community of Williamson County. My daughter played softball. She was a, she was an all-district softball player. And half of her team, who spent the night at our house, half the time, because we had the only swimming pool, was, were my Hispanic neighbors, and at least two of them, I know, were not, their parents were not legal. Okay? And I, these are, these are people that I know personally. I care about, and you do too. And that's why this is a mistake when people start accusing us of being racist. We're not racist. We want our country safe, and it takes an immigration policy that works to make our country safe. So keeping that in mind, I started trying to think, in our laws, what program we have that we could use to, as an enforcement mechanism, so that people who would be willing to come out of the shadows and want to be here without having the threat of deportation could do that would allow us to show compassion but still use a tool that we use in felony criminal cases. Okay? And that was my goal. And what I came up with is a tool that is used every day in felony criminal cases called deferred adjudication. Now, maybe you don't know this, so let's make it real simple. I know most of y'all are not like me and my little, my daughter Danielle, and you don't speed, but have you ever gotten a speeding ticket and taken defensive driving? Has anybody here that's done that? Oh, look at that, a few people. You understand that that document that you signed that said, "I'm gonna take defensive driving" instead of anything, it was a plea of guilty, and that you were saying that I will take, if you'll, I'll do this, I'll follow these rules and do this defensive driving if you won't give me a conviction for speeding and make my insurance go up? That is a form of deferred adjudication. So what I came up with is if they, if people want, that are here, the parents of the young lady, wherever she may be, that came up and talked to me a little while ago, they want to stay in this country without being deported. If they want to join up, then they could come in and sign a document that admits that they broke the rules, and they came in this country illegally. And that document will say on it, "If you don't follow the rules we set for you under this, under this term of your probation, you'll be deported. But if you follow the rules, you won't." So what are the rules? Are they really, really mean and tough? Let's see, support your dependents, don't break any laws. I think all of us have to do that. Pay your taxes, meet your obligations. Oh, by the way, for your own good, learn English. For your own good, learn American civics and government, so you understand the country you're in, not the country you come from. Pay fines if you have a fine. If there's, if you've caused damage, make restitution. But over a four, five-year period, make restitution and pay your fines. So you don't have to come up with $10,000 or $2,000 or whatever the fine may be today. You've got a period of time, you can pay it out. If you follow the rules, play by, play ball by the rules, at the end of the five-year period, you have met your obligation to the United States of America and every state in the Union. You no longer are under threat of being called a person who has committed a crime in this country. It's the same thing we do for people who commit burglary, car theft, even manslaughter. People go on deferred adjudication for that. It doesn't happen for murder, but it does for, it's about everything else. Even attempted murder. Now, some people don't understand that. They say, "Why would you do that?" Because the definition of amnesty is very, very clear. Allowing a person to break a law or a rule and excuse that without consequences. That's amnesty. We can call, you can call amnesty whatever you want to, but blacks' legal dictionary calls it that. And that's, that's the term that our Supreme Court, and every court in this land, would use to define amnesty. Being excused of a criminal act without consequences. And these are consequences that every day felony offenders, we use that to police their lives up and change their lives. So it is a punishment. You may not agree with it, but it is. The second thing we gotta do is we gotta decide, how do we stop the next bunch of people from coming across the river? Well, the only thing that we know of right now, and let me say, I know there are people here that use it, I know there are people here that don't like it, I have talked to you. But we, we can make E-Verify work. And E-Verify is a method whereby you can call a number, and the computer will tell you whether the Social Security card and the documentation that's being presented by the person who wants to go to work is valid or invalid. Just to check on how long it takes, I E-verified my entire office. In two hours, right, donors? Hour and a half, two hours? I learned that I have nobody that has a bad Social Security card. I was very grateful for that. In my whole organization, even Shannon up here, he was close, but he passed. So if we put E-Verify in place, and we make it a law that everybody who applies for a job, or has a job, has to be verified. Everybody that has, has false documentation now and has a job will lose their job. Okay? Because they use false documentation. Everybody who applies that has false documentation won't get a job. And then that person that's across the border that says, "I want to go over there and get a job," his, his opportunities become very, very limited. Sure, will they be people that will still hire people and try to, you know, give them a really cheap wage and put them to work and treat them, treat them badly and all that stuff you hear about in some of the shows you see on television? Sure there are. But the difference will be, our law, our bill will say, those people who choose to go in the black market and hire these people that can't be verified, they will be fined tremendously. Where between, our position is between $25,000 and $50,000 an occurrence. You're not gonna run your business very long with three or four $50,000 pops for violating the law. So that means that there's gonna be incentive for the employers to use it, incentive for the people to be legitimate when they come here. Now, what about these people we just put on deferred adjudication? How are they gonna work? We're gonna give them a five-year work permit. It is not a pathway to citizenship. It is a temporary legal residence in the United States for the purpose of working. And one of their conditions will be, you have to work. If you lose your job, you gotta get a job. If in three months you don't have a job, I'm sorry, you're out of here. Because, and by the way, all these jobs that were out here, American, anybody that hires somebody that's on a work permit has to certify. They have given every opportunity for a Native American citizen to have that job first, before they give it to someone with a temporary resident visa. At the end of that five-year period on deferred, they, they now are off of their, their rules, but they still have to abide by the law, and they still have to have a valid, valid paperwork or they can't go to work. If they want to stay and work again, they can get another work permit for another five years. And by the way, that same work permit program will be continued over to our fourth pillar of future workforce. Because there is a need in this country for people to go to work. We are not replacing ourselves, okay? We are not replacing ourselves in the workforce. And there are jobs that even though you apply for, Americans to do, I can name one right here, and I've got a pretty good confirmation in this room. You want a post hole, Doug? I'll almost guarantee you, you don't find anybody that'll step up for that job in Central Texas. But you, but you will, you could get somebody that comes in with this group that would be temporary workers. So the, the point of my whole point is, we've got to have a future flow system also, but it's temporary and it's resident only. It's not a pathway to citizenship. After a 10-year period of time, if a person does want to be, go for citizenship, they cannot get a work permit, and they can get in line to get a green card. Now, if they get in line to get a green card right now, they should have that work permit because more than likely it'll take them about three to five years to get a green, green card under our current system. I'll change you the system at all. And so the current pathway of citizenship that exists today would be the only one that exists. So there, there we, those are just four, it's a lot more, there's a, there's a question about the, the high-tech visas. We have a situation in this country where 98% of the people who graduate with a PhD We have a situation in this country where 98% of the people who graduate with a PhD in electrical engineering or physics in the United States, from the top 50 American colleges, are foreign students. That's a fact. And right now, we can't hire them after we educate them. We have to send them home, under our current law, and then try to recruit them back to go to work for us in this country. On a limited number of visas, at one time it was 10,000, right now it's 25,000, it needs to be about 150,000 visas that are available for our employers to hire the best in the world to come here and go to work. Because we want the best in the world coming into this country to work. And we've gotta fix that system. Because right now, we are losing to our competitors after we educate their children, and that's gotta be fixed. So, there's a lot of other parts of this bill to be fixed. But the one we concern ourselves with is the people who are here, which I think we've got a solution. The people might wanna come, and they, and break the law again, and we, way away, they can't break the law. And finally, the people we want to come in here to work, we have a system where an employer applies to get them, and they can come in as a resident only. And citizenship and the path to citizenship remains the way it is today. The other thing we do away with in our bill is chain migration. So, you can't get one person here and bring 40 other relatives into the country based on that one person. They can only bring their children, their wife, their children, and their mother and father, only, only into the country. Well, you don't think that if, if I hire a guy, an engineer from India, I pay him $350,000, and he's got a wife and two kids in India, you don't think they should come, join him to go to work here? Sorry? The only reason we have the mother and father in there is because of Asians. Asians have this family thing about mothers and fathers. That, now, this is what's proposed.
How about our family?
Okay. Okay, listen, if you don't like it, you get a chance to say so. Okay? But let's don't shout. Let's let you...
Jonas, you got the mic.
If you raise your hands, I'll get to you, I'll start on this side and work my way over. Raise your hand if you're in this one. Um, there's a lot of people here, I'll move along as far as I can, um, and you can say your name and where you're from. Example, I'm Jonas Miller from Round Rock, Texas. And then just kinda, uh, have your commentary or your question, and I'll start. Is anybody here at this table?
I'm, I'm coming up. Okay.
I'm Robert Gaines, and you and I have chit-chatted before via email. And as you talked about the, the veri-
Where are you from, Robert?
I'm sorry, Temple, Texas. And as, as you talk about that verify, who's gonna be in charge of the verify, when right now, we can't even verify the people that are here? Who's gonna be in charge of that leviathan that's gonna be verification of the 11 million that are gonna balloon to the 40 million?
Well, I don't know enough, the balloon is gonna be an interesting thing, I don't know about the balloon. It may, it may not. Okay? So, I might, I might take that premise, that if there are 40 million here, then it's gonna be 40 million. But it's gonna balloon because our bill says, no one who's not in the United States from December 31st of 2011 will be eligible to, to be, fall under our immigration law. So, if you came here anytime this year, last year, or this year, you wouldn't be eligible. And all those people who are sneaking across right now thinking they're in amnesty would not be covered by our bill. So, but, but the question is, who would administer it?
The last thing, when you talk about the high-tech visas and their requirement, I thought we were a world economy. Can't they go back to their country and do the same work there that they-
They sure can, and then we'll be, they'll be competing against our country. And here's what I was told by the folks from the high-tech industry, if they can't get a PhD to run their programs, then they'll take their programs to those countries. So, instead of Dell Computer being in Round Rock, Texas, Dell Computer will be in India. It is a world economy. That gentleman back there, give me a second.
Hi, Megan Crossalado, Texas. I'm all in favor of securing the border. That's terrifying. I have never been so afraid in my 56 years of living than watching this and wondering what's coming down the pipe at us. I wanna go back to your statement, we're all a nation of laws. If we're truly a nation of laws, then how can we give broad adjudication, deferred adjudication to people who have made a conscious decision to protest against the law? If I go down there, I get arrested for doing what they're doing here every day, and I am like this man, I'm hungry for our politicians to start paying attention to their citizens instead of people here who are illegal.
The, um, burglar of a habitation that burglarized a house in Temple tonight, he gets put on deferred adjudication, made a conscious decision to burglarize that building, and yet, circumstances of our criminal justice system sets up a less moral punishment, deferred adjudication. You don't have to agree with it, but you, if, what is your solution in, for the people who are here?
Send them back.
Okay? Would you get me one tomorrow? Bring him up here. There's 11 million people here, and we now have an army of 480,000 people. So, how many of our soldiers are gonna have to round up these people to deport? Who's gonna pay for the deportation?
40 million.
Excuse me?
40 million.
40 million, okay, who's gonna pay for the deportation? You don't have 40 million in the military, if that's what you're saying. We have 480,000 in the military today.
Jonas said 11 million.
I said, well, 11, 40, there's not 40 million, I don't know where it is, but it's somewhere in between. I don't know where it is, and it's up to you.
This lady has a question back here. Back here, Judge, back here.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Belinda Bay from Melton. Um, are you gonna do anything about birthright citizenship?
We can amend the Constitution, that's the only thing we can do.
No way. It's already against the Constitution. They have to be subject to our laws as well as the law here. They're not citizens.
Sir.
But I'm tired of that.
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what I'll tell you.
Judge, Judge.
I've got a Constitution in my back pocket too. I read it, and they have to be subject to our laws. They're not subject to our laws. They come over here, they're not subject to our laws. Or they're in subject to our laws. You read it, I've got a copy too.
All persons born or naturalized in the United States except for the jurisdiction, not law, the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States.
Okay, so we got the Constitution answered.
Jurisdiction means you're here.
Yes, it does.
No, it doesn't. That amendment, Judge, was to keep the southern states from denying citizenship to former slaves. That's what they want.
Well, it's great, you know, you and I have discussed this on the radio, but you know that the only way you're gonna fix it is to amend the Constitution of the United States.
No, we need better judges.
Judge, Judge, this man has a question back here.
Well, that would be, we're way beyond, you and I, they're gonna go on the radio another time, okay?
Judge. My name's Brad Bailey, I'm, my family owns restaurants in Houston, Texas, and employ over 97 people, and we have the Obama care facing us straight in the face, but also, I have honored really short shoulder-to-shoulder with video Hispanics in my restaurant, family's restaurant for years. Um, I've seen firsthand how broken our immigration system is. We have E-Verify in our restaurants, and I can tell you, it makes the US Postal Service look efficient.
I, I, I said it didn't work right there.
However, however, I'm all for an E-Verify and public verification system, I applaud you looking at better ways than pre-market to make it work, but a guest worker program is exactly what our country needs, to make sure that the American worker gets priority on jobs, and only then do you look for the guest worker route. We as Republicans argue so much over the citizenship component when that's not even what they want. In 1986, citizenship was not the priority, less than 40% actually took the citizenship route. They wanted work, and I believe the Republican Party of Texas platform that we passed, the Texas Solution, which I served on that committee, is a great start, where we didn't talk about amnesty, we don't believe in amnesty. We believe in common sense, common sense, making sure that the rule laws follow, but also making sure that we repair our broken immigration system, and by that video, it shows how broken it is, but it takes leaders like you to stand up and do what you're doing and applaud everything that you're doing.
Judge, Bob Craig from Flint, Texas.
Hey, Bob.
Hey. Uh, all I'm having is, if they're breaking laws now, what passing another bill is gonna keep them from breaking laws again, but we're not gonna ship out 11 million people, they decide not to follow the law.
Well, here's the deal, Bob. I guarantee you, the current system, uh, whether you believe it or not, is totally and completely broken. Okay? If we don't start trying to fix it, we're not, we just might as well go out and spit into a high wind, 'cause it's gonna blow right back in our face. We're not gonna be able to even start to deal with this issue if we don't start to deal with it. I realize the risk, I realize that everybody in this room, I ask to vote for me every year, and when I talk to my wife and we pray on this issue, my solution was, I'd rather come back to Texas than go to Washington and not do a damn thing to try to fix the number one issue in my state. And so, I'm trying, by dead other means, to do it under the rules of law. It's not popular, but if you take my bill, my proposal back, read the Senate bill. I would vote with the Senate bill if they held a gun to my hand. If we, if we ignore, if you, here's, here's something in the law, my lawyer friends over here. Insanity, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing and expecting different results. Okay? And that, if we keep doing the same thing and expect different results, we're not gonna have.
With the broken law, right? So, enforce the laws that already have? Yes!
So, the next question for you. Congressman Carter, some of the things that you propose make a lot of sense, but my concern is, we have a man in the White House that may at any point decide arbitrarily to ignore the whole law or part of the law, and he instructs the people that are in charge of administering that law to ignore it. What is Congress gonna do about that?
Well, now, let me just state, I started out saying, that if you, if in two, three weeks when I go back to Congress, if I call a press conference and, and pull out of this whole deal, it'd be for that very reason, that I don't trust the President, the Attorney General, to simply enforce the laws if I go to trouble risking my hide to get them passed. But the reality is, I, I feel like if nobody tries, except the liberals, then all you're gonna get is another liberal bill.
Thank you for trying.
Congressman? My name is Roberto Trevino, and I'm from Round Rock. There's probably a good number of us here, uh, in this room right now, who are concerned that while our country was founded on Judeo-Christian principles, our nation is on a downward spiral because of a national disregard, indifference, disrespect, or even disdain for God's law. And many here present will continue to lobby in favor of pro-life and pro-family laws, even though they may not be the law of the land at this time, it's up there. Some of the tier we have, but one pillar, we have four, we have one, and that would be that God's law trumps all law.
I agree with that.
For that reason, the early church partners, uh, chose death. Roman law had time for baptism, to preach the gospel of Jesus Christ. And, uh, they chose to obey man's law, and to obey the Great Commission, to preach the gospel to all nations. That said, Leviticus 1933 says, "When an alien lives with you in your land, do not miscreed him. The alien living with you must be treated as one of your native-born. Love him as yourself, for you were aliens in Egypt. I am the Lord, your God." When God hears all this anti-immigrant rhetoric, both here in our district, and in, and in the United States, I wonder if he says, "People, come on. I say the same thing in 10 other scriptures. When I repeat myself, that means it's important and it's non-negotiable. What part of that do you not understand?" With, uh, with due respect, Mr. Congressman, I am agreeing. My parents came here from Mexico with no papers. I graduated from St. Edward's University with a degree in English, and I serve proudly as a captain in the US Marine Corps in Vietnam. Today, I am a doctor, by God's grace, and by the fact that this country allows me to dream. So, I ask you, sir, what are you going to do when you go back regarding the Dream Act as a factor of the comprehensive immigration law?
Charity's North Carolina.
Well, first off, if the Dream Act is passed by the Senate, I won't support it. That's great. Um, there's an awful lot of people in this country who spend an awful lot of time and effort sending their children to school, and they pay for it themselves, or they borrow the money. Part of the Dream Act that I did not vote for last time and won't vote for again is free college education. I won't vote for that. My neighbors, they're going to, they're going to school, they can go to school, and I support them being able to go to school and not be deported. But I don't support taxpayer pay. And that's part of the Dream Act I won't support. The houses go together, it's built, it's similar to the Dream Act, but not having provisions about free college education and free grants, at that point in time, I'll support it.
Here's the next question.
Judge Carter, my name is Pastor Tim Moore, I live in Round Rock, Texas. I come to this issue reluctantly. I deal with it in my church every day and every week. I have legals and I have illegals. And one of my greatest frustrations is that when I counsel families, mostly that are split, individuals who admit they have done wrong, they've done illegal things, they wanna pay. There is no line to get through them. So, some people say, "Well, go home." And I'm just gonna say that they're not going home. And like you say, as long as we continue to do the same thing, the same way, expecting different results, uh, we're futile in our efforts. So, what I wanna say to you tonight is that I believe, as a student of national politics of many decades, that our conservative friends, of which you are a great champion, we are not gonna pass a bill that'll be signed into law unless there's a couple of components. One of them is on our side, that we secure our borders, and promise me tonight that whatever language you're satisfied with, that we will well secure our borders to stop illegal immigration.
That's a trigger, nothing happens.
The second thing that I would beg of you is that our progressive friends on the other side, I believe there will be no bill, and we will not deal with this issue, if there is not some pathway to legal status or some pathway to citizenship. It will be a dead bill, and we will kick this down the road for another 10 years and miss a great opportunity this nation has to solve some problem, though imperfect it may be.
That's good, thank you. Let me just, let me answer that.
Judge, the last thing I'll say, and I'll sit down, that's my third point, that's a good summary. My third point is, promise me that you will take care of- My third point is, promise me that you will take care of me as a taxpayer. The taxpayer deserves a fair deal in whatever Congress should pass. I have a little plaque on my podium that says, "There is no such thing as a short, bad sermon." That's my sermon, Judge. Help us.
Okay. To start off with, this sweet lady's suggestion is a suggestion probably aimed at this room that we need to send them home. To send them home will be astronomically expensive. And so, it's not a solution. It won't work. We've been talking about it, we've been demagoguing it on the talk radio and all these things, but the truth is, it's not realistic. And we're going to take 11 or 40 million people and deport them from their country. We can't do it. We don't have the resources to do it. That's a fact. Okay? On the issues of, that you said, and the manor gentleman's God's law, I agree in God. I've read the Bible too. In fact, I looked up those very same passages you quoted, sir, and quite honestly, I agree with my friends in the room, and said, "It doesn't say the illegal alien in your country, it says the alien in your country." And I believe we do treat aliens fairly in this country. In fact, illegal and legal, we treat them fairly. They are given the benefit of our laws, they're given the benefit of our Bill of Rights, they are treated with every, if they get involved in a criminal act, they are given a free attorney, just like anybody else in this country. We treat people fairly in this country, whether they're here legally or illegally. That's a fact. In fact, we don't even deport people without at least two appellate procedures to get them deported. So, that's a fact. Okay? Now, just a minute.
Point of order. This Joe, when he's taken his little bald head and sitting back over here, this guy is largely responsible for missed meeting the Republican State Convention into passing what amounts to a handwreck.
Okay, hold on, just a second. Point of order, well, there is no point of order. We usually use the Robert rules of order. Nobody be talking except me, okay? So, I got to recognize each and every one. We're letting him talk, it's like I let you yell, but you ought to talk on the microphone like everybody else. Because if anybody starts yelling, we're not going to get anything done. Okay? So, I don't want to serve him. I reached pretty far this, by saying, I read your paperwork you had, and I don't need to serve him, and I certainly don't need it read back to me. One minute.
Judge Carter. I'm Norman Adams, and evidently, I wrote the rebuttal platform, but I can tell you that with 10,000 delegates there, and the Texas solution, which Brad Bailey referred to earlier, was overwhelmingly approved by 10,000 grassroots Republicans. You know who goes to a convention, folks? That's the grassroots. It's like having a root canal. 10,000 delegates approved the guest worker program, and I'm proud to say, and I know that you and Congressman Ted Poe and a lot of others are working on an outline that's very similar, folks. It doesn't include the Senate pathway to citizenship. It talks about a guest worker program. It talks about a criminal background check for every non-citizen. It talks about positive ID. It talks about modernizing the Social Security card, which is the most counterfeited card we have. These people are on track. It takes a lot of guts to stand up and talk about doing something sensible about immigration. When you talk about rule of law, just very quickly, folks, our laws are broken. We got some other ones you Republicans should appreciate that are broken. We ought to overturn and throw out Obamacare. We ought to overturn and throw out Obamacare. At one time, it was legal by itself, like people in this country, because it was a rule of law. And so, that's all. Look, thank you, folks, for introducing me back here. I'm Norman Adams. I'm proud to be one of your supporters, Judge. Thank you.
I'm treading water here, boys. Wow. Somebody might need to drop me on that. Okay? Start up here. I'm going to start with the band purple, and I'm going to work back around back this way, okay? So, keep your hands down just for a minute, and I'm working back to you, and I think I saw you, and I'll get to you.
I'm John Coleman from Temple. I have a lot of friends that live in South Texas, and I hear a lot of the problems that they have on their ranches. They talk about, you know, their fences getting cut, and their cattle turned out and killed, and things like that. And the thing that just took me the most, when they talk about their families being threatened, you know, from the drug carriers and everything that comes through there, a lot of them have resorted into having to hire their own security forces to secure their ranches and take care of their families and everything. And I think, I would kind of like know, what is the idea to try to stop that, where they don't even have to hire their own police and security forces, just to maintain their own piece of security?
Well, first off, let me just say this. Everything you described is a crime in the state of Texas. Threatening those people's family, killing their cattle, cutting their fences, terrorizing their homes, those are all criminal acts. We don't need the Border Patrol to deal with criminal acts. We got the Texas Rangers, the Department of Public Safety, every sheriff's deputy, every chief of police, and every police officer in the constable in this land can enforce those laws. And we ought to enforce those laws. And I believe Texans can, and I believe Texans will. So, I mean, I don't think they should have to put up with that kind of garbage, quite honestly. And, you know, and I wouldn't fall for the law if they shot people, okay? But the facts are, those other guys are outdone. We've got to deal with this criminal activity. But it's not just the Border Patrol's responsibility for drugs coming in this country, it's Texas's responsibility. Those laws are on the books in Texas, and they're against the law. And I do not understand, and I ask this question over and over and over, what restricts the sheriff, or the chief of police, or any law enforcement office in the state from enforcing the laws of this country? And I don't get an answer. No, it's not Obama. It's not Obama. They can say what they please, I'll put up with the rest for possession of patrol substance and take it to a jury in any one of those border counties and throw it in that. Okay? So, it's dual. We've got to do it. They can't tell us, we can't do it. Now, if he's crossing the border, it's their jurisdiction. But if he's in Fall Ferris, Rock Springs, it's anybody's jurisdiction in the state, is that law enforcement office. And I think we should step up and do it. And that's what our governor says too, by the way. Thank you, that's a great, great idea, and he shouldn't have to put up with it. Come on, Joseph, let's move on.
Judge, there's approaching 7 billion people in the world, and I think most of them would like to be in the United States. The United States is like the lifeboat to the world. When the Titanic sunk, there was 1,500 people in water. Your lifeboat holds 50. How many people are you going to put in the lifeboat? If we don't get a control of the border, both legal and illegal immigration, we're going to sink the boat. How many people can we afford to put in the United States, especially those who are eating off our welfare system, et cetera, et cetera? The data is 101 million people drawing a government check, and it's 97 million people paying taxes on a full-time job. The math just don't work out. We're upside down. We cannot continue to bring more people into this country to get a check than we're making out to them. It's a minute to have what we can have.
I agree with everything you said. That's true, everything you said. And let me say, you got to remember what I said. I said, nothing happens and nothing changes until we have the border defended. And I'm not just talking about the southern border, because right now, we have a fence that's 22 feet tall, that goes all the way out into the surf of the Pacific Ocean, all the way out into the surf. At the high tide, it's half underwater, and low tide, it's still eight feet deep on that fence. And guess what? Drug loads and people loads are being taken by boats around that fence, all the way up to San Francisco. Okay? We've got to defend our coastline, that's our coast guard. That's under my command. We've got to... Everybody that killed us came across the Canadian border. We've got to defend the Canadian border. And you got to pay the bill. Okay? So, that's the bottom line. This is expensive stuff. That's why we have to have a system that works. When they get in here, it doesn't work, it's going to be the same flood, it's just going to come from a different direction. And I agree with everything, with everything you're saying. We cannot have everybody in the world in the United States.
I'm Deanne McCree from Belton, Texas. We can track a cow from birth to slaughter. Why can't we find the people who've overstayed their visas?
Because we haven't tried. Okay? Because we don't have anything written in the law about exit. Anything about exit. All we say is, "Tell us who's coming in." We don't say, "Tell us who's going out." And we have any system for finding out people that are illegal. Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do, something about it. Okay?
Lou McCree, Belton. We have going now in Washington, Benghazi, we've got illegal immigration, we've got IRS after the Tea Parties, we've got Fast and Furious GSA Ways, NSA, listen to everything we say. Hi, NSA. We've got Obamacare, which is the Unaffordable Care Act. We've got the Justice Department targeting freedom of the press, the First Amendment, such as James Rosen, the Fox. We've got Department of Energy trying to get rid of our coal, our energy and coal regulations and Keystone Pipeline. We've got a Department of Agriculture distributing flyers in Mexico City about free programs in the United States, so people can come up here and, and taxpayers can be paid for. We've also got a Department of Defense that contracted with Al Qaeda backers in Afghanistan. Now, the only thing that I understand that you could do, and is, because y'all are in the House and the Republicans are in the majority, is stop the spending. Can we stop discretionary spending and other spending? And sequestration didn't do anything, it just cut down increases. Let's stop the spending, and then we get rid of the regulatory bureaucrats.
Totally different subject night, and a bunch of talk about here today, but what would you say if I told you that we stop all discretionary spending next year? None. There will be no discretionary spending. How much do you think we'll save? Yeah, 2/3 of what we pay now. Our problem is not discretionary spending, our problem is mandatory spending. And those people that don't want to address mandatory spending are as long as from here to Dallas. But the facts are, we have to address Social Security, we have to address Medicare, have to address Medicaid, we have to address all the mandatory spending. And by the way, those who want to defund Obamacare, 50% of Obamacare is paid for by mandatory spending. Okay? It was written in the law. It didn't go through the appropriations process, and appropriators don't talk about it. It came through the law that was passed with 100% Democrats and no Republicans. So, that's the way it works. I understand your pain. Everything you said was true, and I'm against everything you said that's going on in this country, and that this administration has to face up to that. We're doing the best we can to make them face up to it. Under the law, we're doing that. Okay? And I'm here to talk about one problem. Here's the real world. We got three, two and a half weeks left legislative time until next year in the legislature, okay? And we've got to at least fund something to keep us going, so your Social Security checks don't stop, and our soldiers get paid, and other things. Is immigration going to pass in September? I would say there's a snowball's chance the hell people will block. It ain't going to happen. But I wanted to bring it up, because sometime, we're going to have to address it. If I lose, hell, I'd rather be in Texas anyway.
Judge Carter from Temple, Texas. We passed a law in Texas to verify identification before we vote. It was, I mean, it was, it was... Eric Culver and the administration filed suit against Texas, stopped it. The Supreme Court's come up, changed that part of the law. We still don't know what's going to happen there. Through all this, what makes you think you can verify something?
I'm not, I told you, I said, I premise this by saying, I'm not sure that this administration will enforce the law. If I see one more indication, I'm not going to go through this anymore. Why should I waste my time and my political capital trying to fix a problem that the damn administration won't enforce? Okay? And what else can I say?
Next question.
Yes, John Fullwell from Belton. You touched upon a very simple solution a while ago, when we talked about protection and enforcing the law, yet nobody wants to seem to do that. The simple solution, and it's not truly simple, but the solution that would work the best is deportation. Forget immigration reform. Deport the people. Eisenhower did it 60 years ago. It can be done today, and like you said, we haven't tried it yet. So, how do you know it can't be done?
We've deported, we've deported 170,000 people in the last three months.
Okay, that's a start.
Yeah, I mean, we've been deporting.
If you deport enough people, the border will partially seal itself, because they'll quit coming. If they know they're going to be deported, they will quit coming.
I was working in my yard, and there was a guy next door named Felipe. And he was working in that guy's yard, and I was talking about maybe hiring him, this was before I became a congressman, and I was talking to him about maybe hiring him. And later on that week, I had to get a guy out of jail that was in jail for DWI in Williamson County. While I was down there, I saw Felipe in jail. I said, "What happened to you?" He said, "Bolacho, got drunk." Okay? And I'm being deported on Tuesday. No, on Monday. But I'll be back on Wednesday. Okay? And he was. That's why deportation's the one. No, I'm not going into town.
Then you said, "We haven't tried it. Let's try it. Let's enforce the law." And we try.
That is enforcing the law, my friend.
Oh, not on any broad scale. You're talking about one-on-one, you know, an incident. Okay? I understand that. But I'm talking about broad scale.
Okay. Who's going to round them up?
We got sheriffs, we got sheriffs, we got National Guard.
11 million people, okay? No, let's go with the, go with my, my brightly friends over here. 40 million people, you're rounding them up. No, they tell me it's 40. My friends over here, in the orange shirt, say it's 40 million people. So, how are we going to deport 40 million people?
You started for some, a lot of them will go home on their home. I guarantee.
If they get calmed, they're going to be deported today if they get calmed. They're not getting calmed.
So, just don't do anything.
No! Christ, I'm just telling you, I want to do something.
Well, then start deporting them.
We are deporting them. Don't you? Okay. That's it. Now, I'm talking to you. This man, the white, you go ahead and talk.
My name is Ross, and I'm very concerned about losing the whole country. And I think that the abuse of power in Washington by the administration that we have is absolutely evil. And as far as immigration's concerned, you admitted a while ago, that we can't keep track of the people that have green cards and overstayed.
My green cards, we keep track of them.
How do you think we're going to keep track of these people that we're going to let have worker problems? I don't think that's even feasible, because we can't even keep track of the immigrants. Every since, you know, air for air, we can't, we can't find a single person that overstayed their visa in this country.
Because we don't have a law that applies us to look for them.
And we've lost, and we are still not abiding by the laws of the law. We're going by this one and not ignoring that one. We're not doing anything here to save the country.
Congressman Carter. Congressman Carter, we touched earlier on activists. And if you go down to R.E. Thomason Hospital tonight, in the park in front of the hospital, you'll find numerous Mexican ladies about to go in the lake. Their whole philosophy is, we'll go over there, sit in the hospital, in front of the hospital, till our water breaks, we'll go in the hospital, deliver a child, and we'll get $490 a month per child until that child is 18 years old. We've got to stop it.
I'm all for it. I'm all for it. But the Constitution is just as clear as you can see. But the Constitution is just as clear as it is.
We don't give $450 for our children.
I wouldn't talk about the $455. I was talking about, if you're born in the United States, you're an American citizen.
Okay, we're to the next, the next joke.
I'm not arguing with you. It says that.
Go ahead. I'm, uh, Jose Martinez from Temple. I just have a simple question, in a way. Uh, a good number of the folks that are undocumented, they're benefiting us in many, many ways in the economy. Every single person here has gone to a restaurant, maybe bought a home or so, had a much lower cost from their being exported for their labor. And we don't, we don't appreciate it. What I would ask of you is, are you going to thank them for what they're doing for us, for our benefit? And the second point, briefly, that I mentioned, is, you were incorrect a minute ago, or earlier rather, when you said about family type of things. That's a 1965 law. And it's racist also, what you said about the Asian, this thing of family that they have. That's a racist comment you made.
No, it's not a racist comment.
Yes, it is.
Well, listen, here's the deal. I'm sitting here, trying to talk about why we chose to put men and mothers and fathers in there, it's because the Asian community is requesting it. Okay? Because mothers and fathers have a special say in position, and it's resolved others who, and mothers and fathers too. Will that pass? I don't know. But if you call that racist, I'm tired of people accusing me of politically correct statements. That was not a politically correct, a misstatement. That was a fact. That's why we put it in the bill, because Asian progress. That's not, that's not racist. That's a fact.
Okay. Congressman Carter, and everybody here, first of all, I dearly thank you. You are trying. But to all of you, oh, who am I? I'm a US citizen, my name is Beverly, I moved here from California. I know. I have family here from Oklahoma and Texas, and I said, I'm coming back. I love this country. I have a passion for the gifts and the blessings that we have for our freedom, for everything that we're protected by in our Constitution. We, yes, we have so many issues, and yes, I pray to God that we could actually defend Obamacare. But more than that, do you all know what you did before we even started this evening? We prayed. Do you know in the state of California, you cannot even pray, you cannot even talk about God? We have teachers that are getting suspended if they even do that. Now, just give you a little example. The immigration issue. I have a house in Baja California. I'm a legal resident there. I used to drive from San Diego down the peninsula, 1,100 miles to Buena Vista. I would no longer drive now, of course. When I cross that border, I have every single legal paper to verify that I am legally in Mexico, because I'll tell you what, I would not ever want to end up in some of those back screen jails. If I want medical care, I got to show the money first. I just wanted to let you all know about that. I know it's been a long evening. Yes, we have a serious, serious problem at our borders. Arizona, most certainly, San Diego. We had residency from a condo on the ocean in San Diego. My son, I have been there, some lifeguards. We watch them come up by boat, by land, by sea, by tunnels. They even hide in our condos. They go to the safe house. The sheriffs can do nothing, and they walk the streets. And you know, it's just, it's just about being illegal, which can be anybody, as that movie pointed out. In Laredo, I have horses. You call Echo Express out of Dallas, they have ranch owners crying and pleading for help, because our horses, our livestock, our cattle are being, quote, mutilated and slaughtered, ranchers being driven off of their property. You would never hear about, especially from, as we know, Homeland Security, the poll is mine, and who of us recently left? I agree with you. I absolutely believe that we need to close our borders, secure our borders. And for those of us that are here, people that are here illegally, yes, and this has absolutely, God bless, nothing to do with anybody being Spanish. It's about protecting this country and securing this country for our sovereignty, for the terrorism that we've already experienced and that is yet to come. And it's serious.
Thank you. I just want to thank you. Let this guy, let it.
My name is Dar. I just wanted to say that I, a couple of people here touched on what I would say, but uh, why do, I mean, with the birth issue, punish the hospitals. There are hospitals, Dallas, there's a hospital. They, they allow them to just come in and have their babies, and it's appropriate. A couple cartel wives came across to California, had her twins. Now they're American citizens. So we should be punishing the people that are allowing this to happen. And when it comes to people coming here illegally and working, and they send all their money home, why can't we stop that? That shows they have, I can't tell you the times we've been in the hospital where we are supposed to pump up our $1,600 before we have our little surgery, and then the next person can't speak English, won't even give them this information that they need, a phone number, a work address, and yet they get bypassed, not paid attention, and it's because all their money is being sent to another country. And I'm just tired of it. Um, I, we're not enforcing those laws. If you punish them, if you punish them by enforcing those laws, you're not making it easy for them to continue on. We're just copping. And, and that's why that's what we call.
Well, the question of why hospitals treat those people is because of my liability laws in the United States. Yet they refuse to treat those people, they will get sued, and they will pay big damages for not doing it. That's been the law of the United States for a long, long time.
Hold on just one second.
Congressman Carter Davis Horrigan from the Temple, Texas. Uh, just so you guys know, my father ran for state representative in the 60s against Democrat Speaker of the House, Billy Wayne Clayton, not once but twice. And you could hold a Republican Party plat, uh, party convention in a phone booth, as the old saying goes. Anyway, Congressman Carter, I hope that you realize that, and I think everybody here will agree, that the Senate bill is an awful atrocious thing, but not very many people know, hold on a second, I'm a little taller than that. Not very many people know that there are tax laws embedded in that legislation, okay? So what that means is, if the House passes anything with tax legislation, even one little piece of tax legislation in it, it gets to go to Congress. And guess what's going to happen in Congress? It's going to come out a really nice and smelly thing that nobody here is going to like. So the bottom line is, that we're not going to be able to pass anything without running extreme danger that we get something awful. That's point number one. Point number two, uh, as to birthright citizenship. If what you're saying is true about the Constitution, and I surely don't read it that way, and Supreme Court justices back much closer the founding fathers don't read it that way either, what of ambassadors come here in this country and they drop a pop here on US soil, their kids are not US citizens, their kids are the citizen of whatever country that that ambassador came from. So I think that that shows, you know, a lot right there. Uh, also too, I want to apologize to the professional lobbyists who've got special dispensation to talk over here. I just want to say, I'm apologizing, I take back all those mean nasty things I said about you, but I still stand behind the obscene gestures. So, anyway, uh, also too, as to mandatory spending, as to mandatory spending, you can't be obligated by a previous Congress. So that mandatory spending in the new funding legislation that is going to come up as a stockgap measure, we can unfund that mandatory funding.
All right, if I could interject, you know, we need to keep these comments real quick. I apologize, I know there's a lot of emotion, a lot of things that people want to say. I think we've been at this 25 minutes, and we're just halfway through the room. Um, so I'll tell you what, we're going to get this, and my apologies if we didn't get an opportunity to speak your piece, uh, but we, we, we're going to, we can't go more than another 10 minutes, uh, unless Congressman Carter replies.
All right, let me ask you a few questions first. Sir, I want to tell you something that's a misconception, that people aren't with rules. No bill can be forced to go to Congress. Okay? You agree to go to Congress, because you don't have to go to Congress. And anything that comes out of Congress does not have to be presented for a vote on the floor of the House or the Senate under both bodies ruled. So that is an incorrect statement that people make, that you could take a Ways and Means Bill of any sort and get an immigration bill tagged onto it. It is not possible. Wait a minute, this lady's still going to have people come in.
Hello, my name is Monta Blagaribai. I just became a citizen in November. I'm really proud. I love this country.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I am a nationally board certified teacher. My family came to the US 20 years ago. My mother became a citizen three years ago. My sister, who is 33 years old, has a bachelor's in nursing and a master's in public health, is not able to work in this country because she's an undocumented immigrant. I also, as a teacher, it is detrimental and heartbreaking to see a four-year-old come into your classroom. He is a US citizen, let me tell you. Telling me, my mom and my dad were deported. What am I going to do? And you know what happens to our US citizen children? They are put in foster care. Now that's detrimental. That's un-American. That's, that's change. My question to you is, is this the American who wants to put US citizens' children on foster care because Congress can't fix this system? And by the way, these parents, my parents, the reason why I became a US citizen, I will advocate for them, and I will hold accountable people that are against undocumented immigrants becoming citizens, because this country is this country because of the hard labor that we put every single day into this country. We're not cows, we're not criminals, we are human beings that are working our backs off to put this country to be, so this country can be the best country in the entire world. Thank you.
Uh, ma'am, do you want to answer your question?
The bill that I proposed, when in those children they've given over to Human Services, those are people who may even stay here as temporary residents, who they work for it, and those kids, their parents would not be deported.
Now, she asked you a question, okay?
Ever since you started, and they're waiting to hand out.
Well, excuse me, talk to him.
Their parents are already deported.
Okay, I answered your question. These people are complaining that they haven't gotten hurt. That man's about to have a heart attack back there, because he hasn't gotten to be hurt. He's going to get to be hurt before you can get hurt here.
Uh, I'm Sandy Hayes, and I live in Durham.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I have, I have just three quickies. And one is, how did Russia and China do what they did in building their walls, and apparently they were affected? The second one, the second one is...
Don't worry about my question.
Uh, the second one is, uh...
Relate to your question, we'll get to you.
I don't need that, I don't need that. I'll be going to where I have to go down.
Good.
Uh, if we have all the illegals coming in, why do we keep paying them? My sister lives in a city in the heart of Texas, and she has 14 illegals living in her house across the river. They keep coming and coming, the city has gone down, she can't go to the store, somebody's not speaking Spanish, they can't speak English. And yet, they're paying out so much money to them, and my sister's taxes are going up, 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 to be able to pay for all this. Somehow, it's the same mind. And for the little lady back there, I understand that children, uh, believe me, I understand that children, but if the terrorists had come legally, there'd be no problem.
Okay, I wonder what the answer to the question is, that the law's not being enforced, they shouldn't be them 14 to a house, they should be deported.
Yeah. My name's Bill Schuman from Floyd, Texas. So far, I think I'm the only elected official that stood up to talk. I'm a precinct commissioner here in Bell County. I've heard, I've heard some of your comments, and we're going to have deferred adjudication, and we're going to have in-ferred, de-verify, and if somebody doesn't pass the de-verify, I'm assuming they're going to be picked up and detained in some form or fashion. I heard a gentleman say that the Sheriff's Department is going to go pick up these people that are illegal, and I assume they're going to put them in a Bell County Justice Center. Okay, we have drug courts, we have, uh, mental health courts, I've heard talk that they want to have special military courts. Uh, we're being talked, or being asked to have prostitution courts for the four pre-adjudicated prostitutes that we have here in Bell County. Our district courts and our county courts are pretty well loaded up. Now, I'm assuming with this deferred adjudication, that all of this bureaucracy is going to fall back from the county government in some form or fashion.
And this will be done by immigration courts. Federal immigration courts. If they put you, if they put you in your jail, and believe me, you're talking about a guy that fights like tigers to get reimbursement for county jails. Since I've been chairman, we have gotten the maximum reimbursement we can get. It's not enough, and we damn sure got enough to do something.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I tell my constituents that the 25% of their county taxes that are primarily unformed mandates now are not going to go up to this.
Okay, we have gone over the time limit, by 40 minutes, I'm going to have to shut this down. My apologies if you did not get the opportunity to speak, share your comments, questions or concerns, but thank you for coming out today and sharing your, uh, your concerns, and you are dismissed, thanks again. Oh, and just be reminded...